One second. Okay, go ahead. I'm gonna text Chief and let me come on.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the budget work session for today, Monday, April seventeenth. Uh, as you know, the town of Bladensburg holds several budget sessions where our directors and the town uh, town council and other staff members really take the time to walk through every line item of every single budget for the town of Bladensburg. And so whether you're watching live or watching the recording, we truly appreciate you tuning in and look forward to getting your input during this process as well. As was stated in the council meeting, anything that you hear that raises questions, please reach out to us by phone, email us, or stop by Town Hall. We're happy to answer any questions and also take suggestions from the community. And so with that, Mr. Tenelli will turn it over to you to walk us through tonight's meeting.
Greetings, Mayor and Council. This is our um first budget work session. We introduced the FY twenty-four draft budget at the Thursday, Thursday night's meeting. Um, we only could go so far without the input from the mayor and council since this is the mayor and council budget, the town Bladensburg budget. Um, and it's also the residence budget as well for the town, so we hope that have some discussion here and I'll go through the budget in detail. Um, just to, um, it's the same uh format as we've done in prior, as last year and prior years, just just try to be consistent. Um, so you can follow along, you know, what's happening, you know, if you pull, look at FY nineteen budget or FY twenty-four budget. Um, the format will be the same, so it's easy to cross-reference everything. Um, I'll get right into it. The first page, um, and what my version that differs from yours is I just put the page numbers down at the bottom, but I'll send you an updated version. But this is a summary of the um FY twenty-four budget and the gold column over here to the right. And the increase and decrease based on the FY twenty-three bot budget in the center column and also have the um FY twenty-two actuals in the first column. Um, I kinda like to do it this way, so you're reading left and right. Um, some budgets are right to left. I read left to right, so that's how, that's why I have it presented this way. And you can see the increases here, and then we'll get into our departments down here as we get into the expense side of the budget. Um, and when we have a few major departments, um, our administrative departments are the mayor and council, the town administrator, clerk and finance. Um, we call those administration. And our direct service departments are public safety, public works, the ARPA funds, which is American Rescue Plan Act, and any grants, um, because grants are usually restricted for a activity. Um, so that is a um, that is something being supplied to the public. So the first page is is a summary page, um, quick snapshot of the budget looks great, but um what we really wanna get into are the following pages. And I'm gonna cover the revenues for about fifteen to twenty minutes at least, um, because this is what drives our budget and this is, and the revenues are what enables us to provide a service through public works and public safety and through um code enforcement and uh, other programs. So where are the big ones? The big ones are at the top, real estate taxes. We have almost five hundred and sixty-five million dollars of real estate in one square mile that is being taxed. And this is our town tax rate, which I've kept and I kept constant, even though it's not the true constant yield, it's constant for the last at least fifteen to eighteen years. Same tax rate at point zero zero seven four or seventy-four cents per one hundred. Um, and that's increased to about three percent. Our assessments have increased about three percent this year over last year. Assessments were going up between four and a half and five and a half percent uh for the last uh two to three to four years, and now it seems like they they cooled back down somewhat. So when you see that spike in assessments, that could be for um people getting uh well, of course, higher property values now, but also for any work being done to properties such as additions and anything that requires a permit increases the assessed value of a property. The next um large item is a business personal property tax. And this is the tax on for uh businesses for the inventories and furniture and fixtures located inside a business. Um, and this has jumped quite a bit here in the last couple of years, especially this year. Um, we were running between thirty-five and thirty-seven million dollar, um, I'm sorry, um thirty-seven billion dollars of the business personal property tax. And no, I'm sorry, it's million, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misspoke. And now, um we're seeing that more in the fifty million dollar levels. Um, so this is really increased. And as I've talked before, this is for, uh, it's also for unregistered vehicles that that you might see on vehicle lots or um uh, equipment that hasn't been sold yet, um, anything that's not tagged. Um, that's on the road is taxed, and that's why you see at the end of calendar years, like, you know, um they blow out New Year's Eve sales for like large retailers and dealerships are trying to liquidate inventory. So they're not, so they don't have to collect it. I mean, so they're not being assessed on it at the end of the year and have to pay a tax on it. And this is the town tax portion. The county also charges their own personal property tax as well. Um, but this is assessed by the state, billed by the town and collected by the town versus the property taxes above the real estate taxes are billed and collected by the county and then remitted to the town. Um, so we're responsible for collection efforts, which can be daunting at times because it's always a collection effort. Um, but we do get the money in. Income tax. This is the um, the share of the income tax reported by the residents um submitted to the state on the Maryland State Tax Return Form. And a portion that comes back to the municipalities and counties in which they reside. It's based on a very long calculation, but um it's a little bit different for counties than it is for the municipalities. Um, missions and amusement tax here. Sorry, this is um, a tax on the rentals and cover charges um and coin-operated machinery in town. So this covers your laundromats, red boxes, um, also the waterfront rentals um, and cover charges to the bars and establishments. Um, all that is reported to the state and the tax is made to the state and a small amount, and a portion that comes back to the town of Bladensburg. And we've seen this increase lately. Sometimes it's seasonal for the waterfront rentals, other times, um, it's um uh, we saw a drop off during COVID, obviously, and what was really surprising is the laundromat revenues dropped off because people weren't, you know, going to work, they're staying at home and, you know, we saw a big dip in that. So it's just crazy how little thing, little changes in the economy come through, you know, our revenues here. But that wasn't a small change, but I'm just saying any change. Um, local business licenses, this is a product of our code enforcement division. Uh, they're responsible for a public safety division, um, through public safety, as a business licenses and the apartment rental license fees for the town. And they stay pretty consistent um between seventy-eight and eighty-two thousand dollars depending on the um um the businesses, but the 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 number of businesses stayed pretty consistent. So um, it's around how much, Sean, it's like one seventy, it was like one seventy-seven, one seventy-eight, I think, something like that.
Yeah, around one seventy-eight, one eighty is what we stay around.
Yeah, so when it fluctuates a tiny bit, it may, you know, be plus or minus a thousand, two thousand dollars there in that category. Um, and they've already started to build these out for next year. Um, county trader's license, um, I I gotta tell you the truth, I'm not hundred percent sure of this calculation, but the they all, the businesses also have to apply to the county. Sean, I think that applied to the county first, is that correct? Okay, and a a small portion of those revenues come back to the town, so I can piggyback, so. Um, and and that for some, and that has shown a small increase. The cable franchise fees, I debated on where to put this out separately because these are listed separately and the audit. Um, but they're still like, like under license and permits, meaning that it's a fee um, paid by a business, so that's why we have it under license and per and permits because it's grouped with the other business um um, license fees. But anyway, this is, as you can see from the description, a fee based on subscribership of Comcast and Verizon. Well, I think when I first started here, this budget item was around like a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars um, eight years ago, and it's been decreasing um about five to ten thousand dollars every year. You can see it's now down to a hundred and ten thousand. That's because everybody is, you know, just, you know, I'll just jump on the phone now, you know, nobody's paying for the cable packages anymore. Um, they're all doing the streaming services, so instead of seeing the franchise fees for the cable packages, that's dropped off, but you still have the internet access fees there that that we're receiving the revenues for. And this is negotiated every, Rich, you can help me, it's every three years um, between the county and the municipalities in the county. It's like a collective bargaining um, uh, negotiation led by actually our own, our own town attorney representing the county and franchise fee negotiations with Verizon and Comcast. Um, and actually I saw, um, I looked around the state and I saw other municipalities and counties were doing the same thing with Comcast. I don't know if if Comcast all came up at the same time this date or not, but I just see that as um a lot, a lot of people were doing this at the same time. So license and permits, I said, it's been pretty standard except for the drop in the um cable franchise fee, so that's why it's down just about two percent total. Federal funding ARPA, this is placeholder. Um, I'm gonna skip over this for right now until we we get into the uh ARPA detail, um, because this is what the, yeah, what you as mayor council want to see the ARPA fund spent on. I mean, um, we have a projection of what we need, but you know, we also need your assistance. Um, so you can see that this just FY twenty-two is when we got the first chunk of it and we spent, um, we, we, the town budget spent three hundred and fifty thousand, we spent just shy of it. And this current fiscal year, we started out at like one point one million, and the budget amendments increased this to two point eight million. Um, I have some things tagged right now, which what I think we could use part of the ARPA funding, but I'll, this is just a revenue portion, this, this is just a revenue piece to cover those expenses, but I think we should just um wait till we get to that and come back to this because where the expenses are for the ARPA funds is gonna be all upset by what we're gonna put here for the revenues, if that makes sense. Is there by following you with that? Thumbs up, nod, we're good. Um, I've been talking for fifteen minutes. At at any point, please, you know, um let me know if you have any questions. Actually, Rich has his hand up. I'm not looking for hands, so if I miss somebody's hand up, you gotta yell.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mr. Tenelli. Um, I just wanted to um ask one question while you're on that particular line item.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so for the federal funding ARPA, uh, the, just to be clear, the three numbers in FY twenty-two actual, FY twenty-three budget, FY twenty-four budget, um, do those three amounts um equate to the full amount of ARPA funding that the town of Bladensburg has received? Or is there?
No. No, there is a additional funds. If you can see, this is a, we received four point nine million. So this is a three point, this is about four point three, four point four total between these three fiscal years. So we would still have another half million dollars left roughly um of ARPA funding that we could carry through um, um December twenty, December thirtieth of twenty twenty-four or have it slated to be to be used to twenty twenty-six.
Gotcha. Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Tenelli, can you say that again?
Okay. What, which one about the calculation or how we have to have it spent by? I'll just, I'll just say it both. Okay, so, um uh, two point nine, this is roughly, what is this, three point two million dollars um between um FY twenty-two in this current year. And um, I had another one point two, so we're at the, what is that quickly, what is a four, four point three, four point somewhere around four point three million, is that correct, Mayor?
That's what I came up with, about four point three, point four, somewhere there.
Yeah, so, and we were awarded four point nine million. So we have, so we have another half million left to spend or to put towards projects. Um, and we could put all that next fiscal year or, you know, that's why I wanna get into this discussion.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Tenelli.
Yeah.
Mr. Tenelli, before you move on, I'm just jumping back up to the forty-three hundred line items for licenses and permits. So we talked about in the last council meeting, the small cell tower applications. Where would you anticipate in FY twenty-four that those fees associated um with the the small cell towers would be, would we have to create a new line item?
Well, that's something I wanted to jump in when you all were discussing, but the time was getting short because that was um, um we could actually and I have to talk to our council about this, but we could actually increase our um business personal property tax rate up here for utilities. Um, you can have a separate tax rate for utilities and I gotta see if, you know, if it can be narrowed down if you want to, you know, do something with the tax rate to capture those cell towers. Right now, they're gonna be included in business personal property for Verizon, like, like if I look out here, um, what one of our major payers are Pepco. Pepco um has an assessment on all the poles in town and all the equipment being run through there. Uh, they're assessed business personal property tax and we bill them for that. Um, the same with um Verizon for like their cell towers here. I I think they have equipment on the cell tower back here at the uh fire department, I'm not hundred percent sure. Um, but as they put infrastructure in the town, that will show up as an assessment and will receive uh personal property taxes from that. I don't think it's gonna hit in the Fran, I'm not sure if it's gonna hit in the franchise fees or not because, you know, I'm not sure what if, if that's gonna in- increase subscribership. The franchise fees are based on subscribership. So they're not based on usage.
And to clarify, so I'm thinking more so along the permitting and licensing portion of it. So in our discussion, we talked about um hiring a firm that would review the applications for us since we don't have in-house, you know, expertise in that area. And um, and there would, of course, be an application fee. I'm talking to give you a chance to drink, yes.
Thank you.
But I know the mouth gets dry, it's a lot of, but that's, that's probably what I was thinking about it in terms of the administrative part of it. Where would we reflect the license and application um fees and any engineering, you know, administrative costs?
I don't know. I honestly don't know. Um, I, uh, Sean, do you know anything about that? What, you know, I'm not sure what the fees would be with that. I mean, I know it's a huge project and everything and you know, when you all were talking, I mean, it's like the town of Ocean City lost their lawsuit, you know, against putting the five G towers there. Now they're everywhere. Each towns like Fenwick and Dewey, same thing, even though they're a different state. You know, they they sued to try to stop and and uh they did not prevail, so they're going up anyway, you know, unfortunately. So I mean, I think what we heard the other night is they're coming, you know, so, um, but I don't know about the permitting and yeah, so it's.
So would, yeah, so I guess if that's something you could follow up with legal counsel on to find out if we have a line item. So it's called out specifically, so every, there's full vis- visibility to the council staff and our community in terms of how much revenue is generated from the application process. I imagine it won't be very much since really we're just able to pass on whatever costs come to the town um that we incur to be able to approve those applications. But just wanted to ask while we were in this part of the um, the draft. Councilmember, uh, thank you for your patience. Um, over to you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Tenelli. May I just, I'm lowering my hand. Um, I have two questions. Is, uh, the first one is around uh business personal property taxes. Um, and rental dwelling units. Do we charge a separate um, business personal property tax for the landlord or for the rental? Uh, like we have a lot of apartment communities here in the town, and I know that they pay taxes. The residents per se don't pay taxes because it's in their rent, right? And then their rent is given to the landlord and then the landlord pays us taxes. Is that the same tax rate as the assessed business, business personal property tax that you have here?
Actually, the apartment buildings are really only paying the real estate tax. Um, and the business personal property tax would be, um, now, if they're renting fully furnished apartments, that furniture inside those apartments would be subject to business personal property tax, but the apartment units, um, they, um, because they have, uh, uh, some of them have, um, shoot, I'm trying to think of, uh, like a showroom, like a gym, um, things like that, things inside the gym or a pool, pool equipment. Those things are assessed as part of the business personal property tax. Um, but as far as each individual rental unit, um, no, because that is part of the real estate tax. That's part of the total real estate assessed tax, which is different. Real estate, you have real tax and business personal property tax. Um, but we do get the the bulk of our business licenses, Sean, help me out, I think are for the apartment units because they're looked at each individual rental unit.
Correct. We, we charge, the town charges twenty-five dollars per dwelling unit in each um apartment complex, so um, for each unit that's occupied unit space that they can lease out, we charge the management company for their properties and the owner's twenty-five dollars per dwelling unit. So for example, I'll use um uh Gateway Gardens, for example, they have over five hundred units, so we do twenty-five dollars per the five hundred for the unit to get charged to the landlord.
Okay. We're getting there, we're getting.
I know, I, I don't think I answered your question.
So where is that reflected? This twenty-five dwelling unit, is it under?
That actual.
Business license?
Business licenses, because that's how we charge them as a business license. Um, so that's when whenever we go out and renew our business license, that's the time where we collect that funding.
Okay. Right. So my follow-up question, Mayor, if I may, is if we wanted to see actuals for the apartment local business licenses, we would need to get that information from you, Mr. Tenelli?
Yeah.
And then I wanted, and then I wanted to know, when was the last time that that was raised? Like that twenty-five dollars a dwelling unit?
If I'm correct, Councilwoman Rout, it was probably about five years ago, that's when we kind of did the adjustment for all our business licensing.
And do we do that in the budgeting process or is that something separate? When we set rates for our business licenses, I would assume it's income coming in?
Um, in the past, I know the, it's usually done prior to the budgets approved because we start issuing out our business licensing applications like mid-May. So it's usually something done earlier on or the budget year, so we know next year what we can increase the amount to, what we charge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rout, and thank you both for those responses. That was super helpful and good questions as well. Mr. Tenelli, hopefully you're ready to talk about fifteen straight.
And please, just, you know, I I encourage questions because I can just keep talking and talking, but you know, I want everybody to have a good understanding. I don't expect you to be financial experts, but I expect you to, you know, I I hope as, you know, the the more we go through this, that you know, you you have some overview or or good feeling about what's in this budget. I mean, I do this every day, of course, it's, you know, easy for me, but I'm trying to make it more as user-friendly, you know, as I can for everybody, so. Um, yes, please keep the questions coming. Um, we'll come back to ARPA, as I said, um, I may want to jump to that next after the revenues, but uh we'll see. Um, state funding. So we have uh two major things for state funding. The first is the highway user revenues. And you see, we're, we are getting a sizable increase for next fiscal year. We received a, a, a letter from them. But sometimes they adjust them up or down, and we won't know until mid-August, the final number that we will receive. And but we were given a preliminary number of two hundred and eighty-five thousand for highway user revenues. Um, police aid has doubled, which is very nice. Uh, we, we were getting a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. This year, we were awarded two hundred and ninety-one thousand, and I bumped it up a little bit um for um in the hopes of getting, you know, a round off to three hundred thousand dollars this year. Um, that was a nice increase, um, so appreciate that from the governor's office, and it's the governor's office for Crime Control Prevention, I couldn't remember the name Thursday night, Chief had to help me. Um, county funding, this is a smaller share here. Um, these are two things that have stayed constant ever since I've been here. Um, receive a twenty-two thousand dollar rebate for using the county dumps as a thank you for, you know, using their service. And this amount here for bank stock has been s- set since nineteen sixty-seven, I think. And it's a hold harmless agreement to discontinue taxing taxing bank shares. You know, I don't know who has bank shares, like specific bank shares anymore, but um this is something that the county pays out to municipalities so they don't go taxing bank stock. Um, that's all I can say about that. I wasn't around back then, so. Um, service charges, this is what the town bills and collects hundred percent on us, okay? Um, again, we're in this gold column here for FY twenty-four. Can everybody see this okay or should I blow it up more? Be good.
It's fine.
If you can make it a little bit bigger.
No problem. That's why I asked, that's why I asked. How's that? Is that a little better?
Yeah, that's better.
All right, it's easier on my eyes too, so. Um, okay, so the local fines and fees, uh, this, this first line item here, this is collected by our public safety office, is violations and impound fees paid to the town, parking tickets, et cetera. Copier fees are, or we call these copier fees, they're really police report fees um that uh we, we get requests from insurance companies, attorney's offices for police reports and also any small charges for Public Information Act requests. Fingerprinting, small um, uh, small fees here for a service that that we provide through CGIS, which is the Criminal Justice Information System. Um, we do fingerprinting for things like gun sales, uh, childcare, um, or new job applicants, um, anything that requires fingerprinting. Now our big one, um, automated traffic enforcement. Um, as I said, uh, last council, at at the council meeting, I think as of today, we're close to three quarters of a million dollars collected and um speed camera fines. And I jumped this up to a million dollars because uh, and and that is roughly about um, um And I jumped this up to a million dollars because, uh, and, and that is roughly about, um, um. About eight, I'm sorry, it's about. We're generating, it, it fluctuates, but. Um, Chief told me last year to put in a million dollars, not to believe him, you know, so, you know, let's see how it's going. And then, you know, he said, trust me, it's gonna hit it. And it's coming in pretty well, so I went ahead and put in a million dollars for the, um, automated traffic enforcement. This could be up or down, um, and for some reason it's down, we may want to hold off on the. On some purchases that we have to make against it because we can only carry so much in our budget. Um, but if it increases, then we'll just go ahead and, and increase this. I mean, this is not something that we have, I mean, we, we only have a eight-month track record on it right now. So it's not something that we have like two or three years of track record, so, um. But, um, so that's an effort right now, that, and this really helps our budget, takes the pressure off. That's on the other things here, the other revenues. Um, you can see the insurance reimbursement, we get about anywhere between the, um, uh, ten and thirty thousand dollar. Rebate for health insurance, um, as, as part of a contract for Care First, and this comes back to the town. Um, also in here is reimbursed cost for insured losses. Um, really, to sum that up is if a vehicle gets totaled and they pay us a salvage fee, it goes in here. Bus shelter advertising, I haven't had this in the budget now for three years. And then all of a sudden, we started receiving revenues again. So they are selling advertisement again, I'm looking at the bus shelter out here right now, some with advertisement is on there. But, um, um, the company that has the contract through Wamata. Remits part of it to the town for any advertising they have. Um, they weren't selling any advertising for a while, that's why just the, um, um, community postings were on there. But now is commercial entities advertise again. It's only a small amount, but it's just kind of a surprise that I came back in. Uh, Rich, you have a question?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Tenelli. Um, just a question regarding, um. Probably okay if you don't know the answer tonight, but, uh, any specific reason why for FY twenty-three? We budgeted, um, almost half less for the insurance reimbursement category? Just trying to understand a trend perhaps, or was that, um, the budget amount versus what we spent in? Actual?
Unfortunately, what the trend is, and I'm not trying to, um, you know, um, but the. The trend is we've had, um. A few more accidents. And we have a few more, yeah, and we have a few more accidents that, um, involves property damage. And property damage includes property damage to, you know, the vehicles. We get reimbursed that, um, for either repairs or replacement. And unfortunately, we've had some accidents, you know, because we have, you know, a lot of officers on the road, a lot of calls. I think, what was it, ten thousand calls of service almost last year, Chief? Does that sound right? I forget what it was, but, um.
That, that's close there, uh, uh, Mr. Tenelli. And then I just add, talk about the accidents. Can you hear me?
Yes, perfect.
Yeah, when we're talking about the, the accident collisions, uh, we're not, we're not talking just about, uh. The officers that being involved in accidents, causing the accident. We're talking about uninsured motors as well that have damaged our vehicles. And unfortunately, you know, our insurer has to cover for them. So the officers not affording all of the accidents.
Correct.
So I just want to clarify that.
Thanks.
So just, just so I can close the loop on my question, Mr. Tenelli, thanks, Chief. So i- in, in essence, in summary, that particular line item is very difficult to predict. If not, almost impossible to predict. That, that, that's it, answers my question.
I ca- I can predict a third of that. I can predict about twenty thousand dollars coming back from Care First to the contracts. The other forty thousand dollars are going to be for property damage, um, reimbursements. Um, and, and, you know, the next question is, okay, we get reimbursed. Income is income, expenses are expensive. So if we get reimbursed, say, ten thousand dollars for property damage to a vehicle. Well, then we're gonna have ten thousand dollars of vehicle body repairs down in the, on the expense side. So it's offsetting. It's not like it's a revenue-producing, profit-generating line item there for the, you know, for that property. Um, for the insured losses, because it's, it's being offset by expenses that we have to, for repairs and replace.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Property rental, I kept this constant, um. So that's up for, you know, we can talk about that. That's for the Mango Cafe. Um, and that is based on what we have been receiving here lately. Vehicle deployment, I kept pretty constant based on the number of officers, officers that we have. And this is a payroll deduction for pa- for public safety take-home vehicles. You gotta charge them something if they don't live in town, um, so. That comes out of the payroll bi-weekly depending on how far away they live from town hall. Miss Lannister revenues, it's only a couple of thousand, that, that's a catch-all for anything that doesn't fall u- up here and above. Um, I can't think of anything on top of my head, but if anything that really doesn't fall in any of these categories. It's very minor, um, I could give you a breakdown of what it is last couple of years, um, but. I'm not gonna spend too much time on just because it's a couple of thousand dollars. But what I want to get to is the interest. Um, we are, and on point to, uh, make. Easily over a hundred thousand dollars this year because of interest. And the, a- and this is for excess funds that are invested through the Maryland Local Government Investment. Pool, which was started and by state charter. Um, as a way to pull all the municipal, as a vehicle that all the, all the municipalities can put their excess funds in. Almost, almost like a money market mutual fund. Um, and a lot of municipalities are invested in this. And, um, and it pays re- really good interest, and it's FDIC insured. So, um. But we've seen this increase quite a bit because, because of fluctuating, fl- fluctuating. I- interest rate market, and you can see what we had budgeted for this year. And interest rates aren't really coming down anytime soon, unfortunately, through the housing market, you know, um, projections and everything. They've come down about a point and a half, but they're still pretty high. Um, Councilmember Route?
Thank you, Mr. Tenelli. Um, I'm, I lower my hand, Mayor James, um. For. Oh, where'd you go? We're, highlight what we were on, the a hundred thousand dollars. Now, does that include the interest that we made from the ARPA funding as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so due to the fact that we are using that money. Would we still want to keep it this high?
Now that you said that, I can go ahead and cut back, cut that back, yeah.
Oh, no, I don't want to, I, I, I just want your best. Like, should we keep it high, or because we're gonna be reducing? Like, I don't know if we should or not. This is really a, a real question.
And, Mr. Tenelli, if I can tag on to that, is there a threshold? That we would want to keep no more than X amount in the account, especially given it's FDIC insured? And that's what, up to a hundred thousand dollars, um?
It's, uh, two fifty, um, but yeah, yeah. But that is, you know, something that, you know, um, we don't really have an investment policy here. Because you have an investment policy, really should have an investment committee to oversee your investment policy. Um, but, I mean, we can, it's, you know, it, it's, it's the risk, obviously. You know, it's in this big pooled account that is managed, you know, per se, done by, by the state. But it's still, they're, they're still making investments. I mean, they're, they're making. Equity and bond investments, um, nothing risky. Um, but, I mean, it's something that we can talk about, Mayor, yeah.
And just one follow-up, so because it's the state who's investing it, is there any additional, um. Financial insurance that comes to the account holders? Like, does the state guarantee something the same way that FDIC guarantees a certain amount?
I'm not sure about that, Mayor. I would say maybe not. I mean, even our pension funds are invested with the state, and they have a. You know, they're guaranteeing five percent returns a year, and to make those guaranteed returns, they're making, you know, they have a whole. You know, they're going out to the market and they're investing all of our funds, um, so it's. It, it's definitely a risk, it's, it's something we should talk about. Um, Councilmember Route, I am up to backing this interest down to maybe eighty thousand dollars. I, I think you're right. Because as we spend down the ARPA funds, um, we're gonna have less cash invested, so.
And, Mr. Tenelli, you have one more question from Councilmember.
Yes, I do.
Going to the, um, forty-eight thirty property, um, rental with the Mango Cafe. I'm looking at that, um, number, I'm all the way across at forty-two. Can you explain, do they ever go up, or it just stays the same in the last three years?
I think it went up, Rich, I think it went up what we saw in twenty nineteen, is that correct? That's the last time that it was increased, um, and it's, uh. But yeah, that's been constant, and actually, we did give them rental forgiveness for about six months during COVID. Um, when the restaurants were closed, um, but this has been constant, yes.
So, Councilmember, to, um, to your point though, so we didn't go up in twenty twenty when the pandemic hit. And it hasn't gone up as Mr. Um, Tenelli was saying since that time. Um, but I know we have to discuss some other matters regarding that, so.
Okay.
To have that in the other meeting as well.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Sure. Let me just scroll, Mr. Tenelli, I think that's it for the hands. Yes, back to you.
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Sure, Councilmember.
So. Help me understand the process, I think, um. Councilmember Brown and Mayor James, you all may know or have your, your expertise is wider. And then, Mr. Tenelli, so this is really framing to my colleagues. So when we are applying for those, for our funds, for the bond bill. When we get those funds, when we're ready to act on them. Would we need to create a space or a line after we complete the paperwork? Would we need, that's gonna be income in? And so, would we just do a budget amendment when it's time for that, or where would it fall? State funding restricted, it wouldn't, but would it be restricted?
I would put that under either state funding up here because it's coming in from, from the state, correct, from the bond bill? Um, or it can be down here and the restricted funds, like I have the CDVG carryover for the, um. Um, for the Fifty-Eighth Avenue project. Um, it can go in one of those too, but because it's a, a state bond bill, I might want to put it under state funding. Because that's where it's gonna show up in the audit, just to be consistent. Because it, it's called intergovernmental funds, which is your. Federal, state, and county funding. So, but yeah, so it would take a budget amendment because, you know, we haven't acted on it yet, um, I don't know. I mean, we can put this in here if we know it's coming. Um, it's, you know, I, I guess I need some guidance on that. Is that gonna happen this fiscal, next fiscal year?
Well, I just, you know, I'm, I, when Mayor James, myself, Councilmember McBride. Councilmember Brown attended Senator Augustine's leadership meeting. We just don't want something that happened to another municipality to happen to us. Where the funding is looking like it's gonna be pulled back. So there's, it's time limited, so I just wanted to just understand the process. The budgeting process as it relates to those, but to answer your question, I'm not, um. I don't think that we, as a council, we've acted on that as of yet.
So, Mr. Chernovich can verify this, Councilmember Route, but I do believe he has followed up on our paperwork. I don't believe the previous town administrator did, just due to the timing of his departure. And when the session closed last year, when it was enacted, you know, for the next, um, fiscal year. But, Mr. Chernovich, please correct me if I'm wrong on that, or share any additional color.
Uh, tha- thank you, Mayor. Um, it is correct that I did follow up. Um, now, as, as the question is posed. Um, as it relates to the budget setting process, um. I would caution and I would not budget the full amount for one fiscal year, I would say. Now, it is gonna be like, you know, grabbing your magic eight ball and saying how much of those funding, how much of the funding is gonna need. Just, just for example, a new mu- a new, a new municipal center, um, you know, starting the planning process. Uh, allocating funding, but then once you get to construction, all those things, it's gonna, that's gonna be a multi-year process. So we would need to choose a certain number, um, that we would allocate on the revenue side. But then also use on the expense side as well, because you're, because you're going to be, you know, doing both. Uh, if you allocate two-hundred thousand dollars as a fictitious example, then we, we need to trust that we're gonna be spending two-hundred thousand dollars. Because we don't wanna, with, we don't wanna, uh, try to do our, do our best not overstate or understate. Um, or something like Boswick House, we could say we're going to spend, uh, in one fiscal year. You know, a hundred thousand dollars, or fifty thousand dollars, or whatever that number might be. So hopefully that, that makes sense from a, from a budgetary standpoint. I'd, I would not, I would not recommend budgeting the whole amount. Um, but I don't, and I, I, I don't, Mr. Tenelli can correct me if I'm wrong.
That's right.
I, 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 um, uh, uh. One more layer would be, I don't know if you'd agree, Mr. Tenelli, or not, to potentially budget, um. A certain part of it, um, but I think we should budget it on both sides, meaning. Uh, revenue side part of the funding, but then also part of the funding in the capital expense side? Would that be a possible way to do it?
Yes, yeah, but, but that would be, I mean, is there gonna be, I guess, design fees or everything else that's gonna go along with it? I mean, if we have a, I can go ahead and, I can get with, with Mr. Chernovich and we can come up with, with a projection. And a- as you said, you know, we'll add something in here, Councilmember Route, under the state funding and, and doing an offsetting. Um, expense under capital, under. Probably have to put it under either town administrator or public works budget, depending on what it's actually for. I mean, if it's gonna be for, um, or, or it may just put under grants, so I'll come back to you with that, definitely.
And, Mr. Tenelli, I know you were saying it could be under forty-five hundred line items for state funding. Or it could be under forty-nine hundred for restrictive revenue. But I agree, it makes more sense under state funding, just from the audit perspective, that seems so much cleaner. So everything stated is all in, in one section. Um, because what happens if we're no longer here? Let's say it's a whole new council in four years, they need to be able to cleanly and easily go back and track. You know, where that funding is to keep things moving forward, so. Is that okay with the group? I just want to make sure, um, everybody's alright with that. My side head's nodding.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up, you all. Um, I was not in all my calls, uh, probably should have jumped on it so I could, uh, could have heard that, sorry, I missed it. Um. So, the restricted revenues, I have this carryover right now. Now, if there's expenses for this project this fiscal year that we can get reimbursed for. This is for the street lighting project, um. I will reduce the carryover amount by that for next year, if that makes sense. So, um, you know, we just can't, you know, take, take it off the books. I mean, it's still going on, it's just a matter of when we're gonna incur the expenses and get reimbursed for the revenues. Other grants, uh, we. Other grants, uh, we have, we are seeing some some donations and for like the cops unit funding. Um, this is for direct donations that we've seen so far for the uh shop with a cop. And we just received another fifteen hundred dollar donation last week, I forget what that was for, but this is restricted for the. Police programs, so that's why it's under restricted revenues. And any expenses, um, they will be offset and the expenses for. Grant expenses, so, you know, income comes in and income comes out. If there's money left over, it's a surplus they can use for future years. So, this is a biggie, the transfer from from fund balance, okay, this is about the level that. Um, close to what what we were about five years ago. So, and and this is. A budget reconciliation to have a balanced budget, that these are, this is when expenses exceed revenues. Um, we have to put something in here to pull from our fund balance. Excuse me, um, in order to. Have a balanced budget. Now, we haven't had to pull from our fund balance, but we budget this every year, um. Because we we budget, you know, based on what we think is is gonna happen up here. And we budget for what we think the expenses are, but through attrition, through uh. Things just just haven't happened or something, we we never spend as much. Um, so that builds up our reserves, but there's also counter to that too, when you're not spending what you're budgeting. Um, there's also a risk that you're not providing a service. So what does that mean? So we have like three or four vacancies that take us maybe four or five months to fill. Um, that's great, saves on the budget, but the, but the opposite side of that is you don't have personnel. You know, or like officers on the street, you know, but you have to go through a process, you know, it's always, you know, it's not. We don't have a large turnover here, which is nice, but any turnover of one or two positions, you do feel it. Um, and and Chief will tell you too, especially in, you know, as line staff of public safety. I mean, um, one or two positions has like a, I call it like a downward impact, you know, so. Um, you see it in, you know, and increased overtime and everything else, so. But because we have this automated traffic enforcement up here. This is is really helping the budget and also that the ARPA funding. That we have in here, um, right now, it's, uh, we have a, uh. A good amount for, not a good amount, but the colas for last year and also for this year have funded from ARPA. Um, just to see how it looks and everything, but we we can talk about where the mayor and council wants to pull those ARPA funds from, but. Um, I'll get into that next depending on the time. So, a total budget.
Just really quick on the fund balance though, uh, because that in preparing for tonight was one of the areas I was concerned about. So I am glad to see that it is reduced because, yes, it's good to be fiscally responsible and have that. There in case of emergencies, but as you said, it also means. There are services that we're not able to provide if those funds are being held up, so I think this is reasonable. Given those other funding sources that we have.
Yes, and again, we budget for this every year, but thankfully we haven't had to use it. Um, and it's really, you know, um. If you look at our handy dandy pie chart here. Your big ones here, we have uh between your real estate taxes, your business personal property tax, your income tax. That is, uh. What, sixty one percent of our revenues come in from taxes, um. Now, when you get to the R large items like the ARPA funding. Which is this fed funding right here. The state funding, which is the highway u- user and the police grants. Um, when getting those, I mean, that that gets up to eighty percent of our budget, okay? So we can see, you know, the heavy hitters here, then when you throw in your service charges, which is the, um. The fines and fees generated by the automated traffic enforcement. You're, you're over ninety percent of our budget. Okay, so those are, you know, between real estate taxes, business personal property. Fed funding, we're gonna call ARPA, state and your service charges, I mean, those are the main portions of our. Um, our budget. And you can see down here, the transfer from fund balance makes up three percent of our total budget. Um, last year, I think it was like five or six percent, um, so. We are cutting this down, but this is assuming now, again, this is assuming now that, you know, the risk here, you know, for me. Um, would be the service charges, which is the automated traffic enforcement, you know, it's. It's generating good revenues now and people that do have speed cameras on busy highways and byways do continually generate good revenue, but. You know, that that's a risk budgeting that, but I'm also. It's a risk budgeting it, but you know, it also may be kind of low too. So, and that's the other thing, I mean, you know, Chief could tell you. It might, it might be twice this, we just don't know, I mean, because they are on, you know, we got Annapolis Road here that, you know, we always hear fifty thousand vehicles they go down. You know, so, um, but council member route?
So Mayor James, this is, this is a question to you and Mr. Tenelli together. I just wanted to start with you, so, well, Mr. Tenelli, but this will go to you as well, so why? So I'm just not clear as to if we did not have, let's say for instance, we don't meet. Our service charge, right? Is it because we are budgeting too much? Than what we're bringing in as far as income? Because Mayor James, I had the same concern as you, so. Can you help me understand where you were going with it because you said it, but then you didn't, I just want, you know, sometimes it gotta click in my brain?
No, so what I was referring to was where the transfer from fund balance is located, the two hundred eighty four thousand. Nine hundred twenty five dollars.
Yes.
Um, so. That is basically, when we come into the new fiscal year, we haven't really collected a lot of revenue, but we still have to meet those expenses. So it's like that savings account to meet those emergency expenses and with it having been over six hundred thousand. Last year, that was one of the things I just wanted to talk about with you guys to make sure. We're not holding up that much money from being able to provide services. Um, but I did see it was already reduced to under three hundred thousand. So that's what I was referring to, but I know you referenced a different um expense, can you?
Understand where the gap is, where, why, where, why are we falling short? Cause I've always had that question, but the budget seems to get clearer and clearer for me every year. So, where is the shortage coming from, especially if we have increased income, we have increased ARPA. Increased police, you, um, you know, count camera funds. So I'm just, it's not connecting where we're falling short or how we could fall short. Mr. Tenelli?
Go ahead, mayor.
No, I was just, I heard a pause, so I wasn't sure if you would do.
I'll defer to you first if you want, that's okay, no, um, it is our expenditures. Um, the, the, yeah, expenditures are increasing faster than the revenues, um. Um, and they have been, but fortunately we have, you know, these new income line items. That are closing that gap, is it completely closed? No, it's not, we're within three percent, so, um. But, you know, we have over five, almost six million dollars in um fund balance reserve. So, to use two hundred eighty four thousand out of that, um, you know, it's. It's debatable, you know, so it's, um, but we've also earned that much, I guess, in interest, but you know, still the interest is not paying, you know, is not making up. That gap enough though either. Um, but thankfully we do have those o- other funding sources, so. And we'll get more into the department budgets where the increases are, um, and, you know, again, this is, you know. What I know is right now, just put down, everything's, like what I say is, everything's a placeholder right now, you know, so nothing's set in stone, this is. To get the conversation started, um, Rich, have a question?
I was muted.
There you are.
Uh, thank you, Mr., um. I wanted to point out one thing that I would be, uh. I guess remiss not to say because this would be the critical year to say it. And that is that the, um, I think Mr. Teller was touching on this earlier. As it relates to service charges and especially the speed camera revenue. So, here's the thing. I'm not sure how many months now, it's only been a few months since we've started to realize the revenue. So we really don't have much of a trend stream to show that. So I know Mr. Teller and I were talking about this in the office. At least for the next fiscal year, you know, the town basically is gonna need to choose a certain, you know, a certain monthly number. And say we're gonna hit a certain target each month. And then that number is going to then eventually equate to our total budget number for the year. Because we've not even seen a year's worth of revenue yet from that to understand the stream that we're seeing. So it's a very volatile source of income, and I think that's what Mr. Teller was trying to say too, you know, in essence, you're really. You're budgeting based on the psychology of drivers and how they're gonna react and how, how, how they're gonna drive. So it's, 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 um, it's uncertain, is I guess, is a way to put it. Um, but, I think. On, on a good side, next budget cycle, you have a very good sense of seeing, you know, what things look like with one year into the program. Now we're just a few months in, so that million dollar number, uh, Mr. Tenelli, I don't know, did you end up, did we end up taking, choosing a, a, a monthly? Just an, an average and and going with that, you and I talked about it, I just wanted to kind of point out that, I wanted to bring the light that. You know, the ARPA funding, the ARPA funding, the town knows is going to end. And that's, and that's, that's finite, you know, you receive a certain amount of money in their pot of the money. And then it's gonna be spent and then in the future, it will be, it'll be no more. You know, this is gonna be ongoing for. A long time, forever, for however long, for the, for the, um. The speed camera revenue, but it's also gonna be a volatile source, there's gonna be ups, there's gonna be downs and, um. You know, I I hate to just say, you know. Gotta throw caution to the wind for next year and just budget something, but in a way, in a way, you kind of have to, I I don't know how else we. We would look at it, we just don't know the psychology of drivers yet over the course of more than, what, three months now or something like that, three or four months? So, um, does that make sense, Mr. Tenelli, are we, are we using some type of?
Yes, and I like, and I, I'd like Chief to just chime in on this too, if he's available. Cause I mean, I'm just making assumptions based on what we are seeing right now, and I think Chief said he's al- also as part of the automated traffic enforcement. Um, is going to add red light cameras next year as well. Um, so that will be split out a little bit more as well, um, we have to have a new monom there just for. Red light cameras, but, I mean, we're, you know, I was skeptical about, you know, I was thinking that we, you know, that, that we might get. You know, eight thousand dollars a month, not eighty thousand dollars a month in revenues, and that's how it's been looking. Um, but Chief can can weigh in better, I mean, he knows more about the program and everything and. They have a dedicated traffic division now, that is, you know, um, under Corporal Harris, so it's. Um, you know, they're doing really well, and now I don't know if the drivers are gonna become smarter. Or, you know, I can tell you that, you know, for me driving through, if I get hit with a speed camera. You know, I don't know if it's in Landover Hills or Bladensburg or wherever, I know I just got hit somewhere on four fifty. And, you know, so, um, I'm not. Um, I don't, I don't know if it's gonna decrease over time or gonna get, you know, people coming back that, you know, is. DC, you know, that's like what the, one of the highest commuting sit, sit, I mean, um, uh, uh, you know.
Vito, can I, can I jump in a little bit?
Yes, please, chief.
Thank, thank you, thank you, so let me just, uh, a couple of things that we can address. Uh, I know that, uh, I'm, I'm not sure how much experience Mr. Chonvind has with speed cameras, but. I've been dealing with these speed cameras since, uh, two thousand eight, when we first got them. And I can tell you from experience. Drivers will never one hundred percent follow the, this posted speed limit. So it's just not gonna happen, and I, when I predicted, uh, you know, we'll hit a million dollars. Uh, that's based on my, my knowledge and experience of dealing with them, because Bladensburg has a lot of thoroughfares. And we have a lot of transient people come through the town each and every day, which. Unfortunately, uh, they are not gonna be paying attention to the posted speed limit like they should be. And everyone is just nowadays are just, you know, not paying attention and just driving through. So I can tell you that, and you, you kind of took a little bit of my thunder away because. We are moving in upward trend and we've definitely moved depending. Back, swung it back the other way because once we start the speed camera, I'm sorry, the red light camera program. Uh, that in itself is gonna probably generate about a million dollars or just shy of it. Because we've identified like five different locations where you get, any given day, you can sit at Edmiston and Tilden. And watch cars come off of Kenworth onto, uh, uh, Tilden and they just run that red light on Edmiston. So, again, we want people to slow down and we, the program is designed to save lives, but. It's also holding people accountable and the, uh, the revenues coming in. Uh, very lucrative for the town right now, and once we, uh, start. These other programs, you'll see that, uh, this money will be put away, yes, it ebbs and flows. It can drop, but it's not going away, trust me, it's not going away anywhere. Because across the country, more and more, uh, jurisdictions are signing on to the automated speed cameras. And because. We have to slow people down, the police can't be everywhere, but we wanna make sure that we hold them accountable. And I'll say, I know where the cameras are and I will full disclosure say. They called me the other day and said, chief, you were twelve miles over the speed limit on Kenworth Avenue, I said, not so. Not, not, not me, not so, but, you know, I told them to push it through because I'm no different than anybody else. I don't want my speed, my camera, uh, to get waived. Because I did, I I exceeded the speed limit, so I'm gonna be held accountable and make my donation to the speed camera program. So I think that'll put us over one million, me paying my forty dollars. That was a joke there. But, uh, but yeah, so, so I just want.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, just a question based on your experience, because I know you've dealt with these cameras for many years. Um, do, do, is there a point where it kind of stabilizes? You know how when some things new, as it was said earlier, you're catching people off guard? But then does there come a point, we know it's not gonna go down to zero, but where. Maybe initially for the first few years, it's at a million dollars, but it stabilizes around five or six hundred thousand, or is it lower than that? Do you have any insights there?
So I tell you, it, the season can affect it, like in the winter time, it's not gonna be, you know, when it's snowing out, it's not gonna be that many people. Exceeding the, the speed limit. So the revenues that you've captured throughout the year, that other nine months. Will hold you, it still counts towards that end of the year. So, yeah, the revenues would drop, I would say it's my last jurisdiction, when we first started. It was three, like three point seven million coming in. And then over the, the course of, I would say, five years, it went to like two nine. It went down to like two seven, but it always stayed over two million. Because, again, where I came from, they had a lot of thoroughfares that transient operators came through. And never paid attention to, uh, the speed, uh, the posted speed limit. So people undoubtedly will speed. Um, yeah, we'll get some that will correct their action like myself, for instance, I know the cameras there. Uh, so I need to be cautious when I come through there, but the people that don't know the town or the people that don't care about the posted speed limit, it's like forty dollars. Versus me getting to work on time, they'd rather pay the forty dollars, uh, to prevent being late. So they just gonna go through because I've seen habitual violators that know the cameras there. And they still just blow through the cameras because it's, it's no points on the license, it's just forty dollars, that's how they look at it. And I'm gonna get to work on time.
Gotcha, thank you for that feedback though, it is helpful, understanding generally how it can taper off after a few years. Um, there, so there's two hands up, um, that's, I know, Mr. Chernovich, you were waiting for a bit as Chief was talking and then I'll go to council member route. And then also just wanna note, it's, um, a little after seven, is everyone okay if we just go till seven thirty and adjourn? I don't wanna, um, you know, be disrespectful of people's time, so I just wanna make sure that works for everybody.
Man, that works, but I do have a hard stop at seven thirty.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Council member blunt, yeah.
I, I'll yield my question um, to pick this back up at another time. I actually, um, if we're gonna go to seven thirty, I would like to be excused.
Okay, and again, thank you for your patience with um, the delay today, but appreciate your. Yeah, thank you. Um.
Thanks for the input, though.
Yes, definitely. Um, have a great evening, council member Ralph. Mr. uh, Charnovich, I think you still had your hand up.
Um, yeah, I was just trying to decide if you wanted me to forego my question or not, but I, I. Uh, chief, this, I just wanted to make, make a, make a point. So chief, this is not me making an attempt to, to debate our, uh, uh, the, uh, your points or our points going back and forth. I did wanna be clear. So everybody understood, including yourself. So um, from my perspective. As someone with almost twenty years of uh, public budget experience, period. Um, a key point to, for uh, organization to look at is trending. And my only point was not even necessarily related to the speed camera uh, aspect itself. Uh, fully knowing your knowledge and your years of experience with it, I was just pointing out to, to mention. That from a trend perspective, the town won't have much of that yet until the future goes along. And then you can look at the numbers and look at seasonality for that specific line item. So I just wanted to kind of point that out for everyone, that I wasn't necessarily challenging the, the, the speed camera. Item itself, but saying that we just don't have the data for trending yet for something like this. Uh, but I, I, I do agree, uh, drivers are crazy, except for me, Mr. Five Under, but uh. Uh, I'm sure, I guarantee you the town will, will keep realizing revenue and over time, there'll be, there'll be some uh. Some, some trending, some numbers to look at. So I just wanna point that out, chief. Uh, thank you, sir.
Oh, no, I'm right there with you, Rich. I fully uh, agree with you about the trend. I just wanna take the uh, the stigishock, if you will. From the, you know, the council, I don't want them to think that, oh, this may not be a successful program, but I definitely agree with you about the trends.
Yep.
So I, no, I, I wasn't debating you. I just wanted to kind of put the council at ease uh, about the direction we heading.
No, I got you. I wanted, I wanted to be clear that I wasn't trying to make anybody uneasy. I was just kind of laying out, laying out what I, what I saw, what I wanted to say about trending, so. Um, we can, we can move onward. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Thank you both for the input. And then Mr. Tenelli, just one more question as we look at the pie chart. So looking at the percentage of funding that we receive from the county. Being a big old whopping zero percent, is that normal for municipalities to have that? Small of a portion of funding coming from the local county?
Well, um. Our tax differential here goes directly back to the residents, uh, meaning they get a discount on their tax bill. So each resident sees a little bit less, you know, like a ten, twelve, fifteen percent tax they pay to. Prince George's County um. On their real estate taxes, tax differential, and that again is the tax differential is. A reduction in real estate taxes town residents pay. Because Bladensburg provides a service such as public safety and public works and code enforcement. Now, um, there's another way they can give a tax, counties could give a tax differential. They could give it directly as a same calculation, but it goes to the town. Okay, so the um, tax differential start going back to, to the citizens. That, that differential amount. Goes right into the mu- municipal budget. So the red, so the residents don't see a decrease. But the municipality gets the tax differential. So that would drive that county funding up. Um, now, if there was like uh, shared services such as, or uh, reimbursed services from the county such as um. If they have reimbursed us maybe for like a roads project or a um. What did we just talk about at last meeting, Mayor Quick? A um, um. Water, uh, wastewater, um, drainage project or something. Yeah, so. So, yeah, so the county like reimb, you know, would just say, hey, municipality, you put the levies up, we'll reimburse you for the repairs and maintenance of it. That would go under that, but accounting funding, yes, I mean, for the size of the county budget and the size of our budget, you know, um, we're kind of like. Lost in the sauce there a little bit, but um, you know, so it's um, but you know, they do backfill us on. You know, I, I'm sure chief could fill in if, you know, um, uh, for, for public safety, for police assistance. Or if our nine-one-one system goes down, it rolls over to the county, um, things like that, that we wouldn't necessarily get. Charged for, I guess you could say, but the um, for the county, like revenue assistance, yes, it is very small. Hopefully that answered your question in a roundabout way. Yeah, I know, it's.
It does. And last question on the chart, last one, I promise on this chart. It's a beautiful chart.
Thank you.
Um, but for the million dollar federal earmark, I know this is really gonna take. Is another probably cycle for us to get it. It won't be FY twenty-three, maybe FY twenty-four, just because of all the. Steps we have to go through, the trainings, Rich is smiling, webinars. Um, so should we just wait until we're at the point where all the prep meetings and trainings have happened before we come back? And do the budget ordinance to put even a portion, not the whole million dollars, but even a portion of that?
Um, I mean, I mean, we can put placeholders in, even what council member Ralph said for the, I mean, I call them placeholders, meaning that. Is, we have something on the books to show like something's happening, you know what I mean? So. Um, just like down here in the, in the uh, grants, you know, we have the, we've had this on the books now, the. Uh, community legacy on the books now for three years, you know, um, just hasn't happened. Didn't happen while I was acting town administrator during COVID and everything. That's when that was awarded. Um, but it just takes, you know, we're small staff here, so that just gets, you know. Stuck in there as a placeholder. Now, if we think things are gonna happen, you know, the earmark money, we could put in maybe. A hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars of federal funding, because I don't know, is that, is that, is that like, I gotta see if that's like a, you know. A reimbursable type grant, or is that just given to us upfront? I have to see the revenue guidelines, meaning, you know, the. Direct reimbursement meaning is, I mean, reimbursement style is, we spend the money, then have to apply against the earmark to get the money. Or is it come through as a, like a lump sum? I'm not sure how it's, you know, and the same with the bond bill money as well.
Well, I can say for the federal earmark, Mr. Charnovich is becoming an expert next to, because of these trainings. Um, so he, if he can't answer it now, he will be maybe after the next webinar training.
And that's good. I mean, that's kind of input that I need, you know, so and uh, and, you know, and, and Rich probably, you know. Didn't want to put this in here right now, because, you know, we wanna hear from mayor council, what, you know, reality is and everything happening as well, so. Um.
But to that point, Mr. Charnovich, would you mind, I know your hand is up, but would you mind? I know there's a, that one training happened, there's another one coming. On the next one, just asking the question in terms of timing. You know, once those sessions are complete, when can we expect to get any of that funding? So we can, we're clear on that for the budget process?
Sorry, let me, let me gather myself here to unmute myself. Uh, so two or three parts to that, um. Let me take your question first. Well, one, one thing is those webinars are, what we talked about earlier. Um, the pub, we, the, the participants cannot speak, chat, anything like that. We are all just there. It's only the panel that can speak. But I can pose that question through a, a means of um. Oh, there's a way to pose the question. So I can pose the question through that means, but not necessarily on the webinar. Uh, but then I also wanted to say that, uh, so um. I can actually see both perspectives that, because you can make a budget amendment in, in either direction you go, right? So you either put, one option is put zero in, do the amendment later in the fiscal year. Another option could be put funding in, and then should it go the other direction, for whatever reason happens. Then you could do a budget amendment the opposite direction also. So have the funding in. So I tend to think Mr. Tenelli's perspective, a, a, as he said it, maybe, I tend to think maybe a better approach in that. You wanna show in your budget that, that you're moving, the, the wheels are churning. Uh, as opposed to, you know, showing that, that allocation should it, should it come up. So I, I would probably err towards budgeting for it, knowing that, especially if it's a zero, if it's a zero sum. A zero uh, uh, some gain, that it's, if it's a hundred K in expense, hundred K in revenue. You know, you're showing it in both directions, um, rather than just showing one side and then have it, have it uh, affect it. In, in either direction. Um. Does that make sense, Mayor and others?
It definitely does. Council member Brown or a council member blunt or council member McBride. Would that work for you guys to just put it in there? And just even it out with, e- even if it's just a hundred thousand on expenses, a hundred on revenue. So if we don't get it, it zeros out. And we can come back and address it with the public, that the money didn't come in this fiscal year. Nothing is lost, we're not spending, but it, at least we show that it's coming in the budget and it's reflected. And for the public to be able to see that as well.
Okay, with me. Yeah.
Okay.
But as I said, this is just placeholder, so we're just getting the conversation started, so.
Hmm, right. Yeah, thank you for that. Okay.
Thanks.
Back to you, Mr. Tenelli. I'm done asking questions about the pie chart.
And I'm getting ready to have to wrap up in a couple of minutes, so I could.
Yeah, we've got seven minutes, but if we break before that, I don't think anyone will be sad.
Yeah, no, and if we can, yeah, yeah, cause we have that little, you know, snaffle earlier. Um, so, you know, took us over our time just a little bit, yeah. We have many more.
Well, Mr. Tenelli, you wanna wrap this up and then um, when we come back, we'll start into the department budgets?
Vito, you're muted. Vito?
You're muted if you're speaking.
Sorry, I, I coughed and I turned it off, so I wanna hear, hear my coughing fit. Um, but yeah, I mean, that's a good hard stop. I mean, we've only gotten through the revenues, but there's, you know, a lot going on and, you know, and uh, we can go through the department budgets. And I can tell you, the administration budgets are good, do go through pretty quickly. Um, the main one that's, is gonna take them, you know, the, the most time would be the uh, public safety budget, because it, it is the largest. And also public works, um, because these are, as I keep saying, as I, as my selling point is, you know. For our town finances is that we're a service industry and those are the ones providing the service. Um, so I will um. Real quickly, uh, the summon ups in my last couple of minutes here, um, a couple of changes that uh, I'm gonna make. I'll probably wait to make all these changes at the end, but we're gonna decrease interest some. And add uh, income and expenses for the federal earmark. A hundred thousand dollars, so, you know, a hundred thousand dollars income and a hundred thousand dollars offsetting expenditures. Um, bond bill, Mayor, I didn't get a consensus on that. I wasn't sure if we had a consensus on that or not. Should we do the same for that or um?
Uh, I had, with council members, tell me what you all think. You wanna just be conservative and just do a hundred thousand on the revenue and expense. Expense side. So again, not, there's no harm if the money doesn't come in, but at least we've prepared for it. And, and it's also a reminder to the residents too, that we're tracking that bond bill money that was um, approved last year. Okay, thank you.
That's fine.
Okay. And I think I have a good stopping point here, Mayor, so um, let's turn it back over to you.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for taking the time to walk us through this and thank you to everyone, um, all of our directors. For answering all the questions that we have. We threw a lot of questions at you all tonight. Um, thank you to the residents who joined live or will come back and watch the recording at a later time. So with that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn tonight's budget work session.
I'm so moved.
Moved by council member blunt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member McBride. Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Night.